I'd like to call to order the March 13th, 2014 work session of the Forsyth County Board of Education. Welcome, everyone. If we can all rise. Kristin will do the invocation and pledge for us.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful sunny day. We hope that others in our country up north will also benefit soon from their break in the winter weather as well. It's a night we gather here once again to do your work and serve our community the best we are able. Father, we ask that you give us guidance as we listen and gather information from all of our stakeholders as we select the next great leader for our school system. Help us make the best choices and decisions that benefit our students the most. Father, we ask that you comfort those who are sick and suffering and protect the brave souls that look after us each and every day, both here and abroad. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. (I'm going to take my micables off.) Okay, we have before us an agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Say.
Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? And next we have presentation and discussion items. And the first thing is the 2014 superintendent search. And we have with us today Mr. Jim Puckett from the Georgia School Board Association. And I think he's, if you want to come up and just, I know some have been through this, some have not, so if you want to just go over it with us and teach us how it's done, that'll be great.
Thank you.
You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. It's a pleasure to be with you this afternoon. Let me take upon a personal privilege and thank you for your support of the Georgia School Board Association and to recognize Ms. Crowe, who has been a longtime supporter and has been involved in the Board of Directors there. And we have a chance to visit from time to time the State Board.
Yes, we do.
It's a pleasure to be with you. Let's, let me share these with you.
I love the way we recycle these.
Madam Chair, if you approve, I have a few extra copies.
Oh, that's fine.
As all of you know, the Georgia School Board Association provides a wide variety of services to members. Among those services is the opportunity to assist as local systems reach out to fill the position of superintendent of schools. It also goes without saying that members of this board understand that there will be few decisions that you will make during the course of your tenure as a member of this local board that will be more important than that. We have been training school board members since 1951. During that time, we tried to build our training programs on what we call best practices. But a couple of years ago, as all of you know, the Georgia General Assembly, in its wisdom, put into law what that relationship between the board and the superintendent should be. And they created something called the governance team. And in essence, they're saying that the successful school system, in order to be successful, has to have a governance structure where everybody understands their roles, but yet where each team member can bring to the table like pieces of a puzzle their knowledge and experience and expertise so that, working together, the board and the superintendent can lead the school system into the work that we're all about. And that's to provide the best in learning opportunities for the children, for the girls in our school district. The Georgia School Board Association developed several years ago a process, if you will, for assisting local boards as they go through the superintendent search process. Let me say what you already know. It's not our job, and we will certainly not make any attempt to choose your superintendent for you. That's why you get paid the big bucks. The work that we will do is to facilitate the logistics, if you will, of the superintendent search process. I like to call it the grunt work. It's to allow us to assist you with the details of the superintendent search process, which will allow you then to be able at appropriate times to make decisions that ultimately will lead to that final decision of who the superintendent of schools will be at the appropriate time. I'm going to, with your permission, very quickly go through this document, which is in your packet. We have a search process, as I said, that has proven to be successful over the years. And as I've talked with the chair, we are proposing that we work together through this process. If you look on page two, that's the propaganda that we use to sell the service. But if you look on page three, you can see that we've been in the business for a long time and have successfully assisted school districts as they've gone through the process that you've gone through, including assisting this board, I think when Dr. Evans was employed. Page nine is some background information that we encourage the local Board of Education to do as you begin and work through the superintendent search process. Along with your board attorney and your staff, we suggest that you take a look at the legal aspects of recruiting and employing a superintendent, see if there are any local policies that you need to be reminded of related to the selection of the superintendent. And I know that you, through a variety of ways, have gone through processes of determining the strengths and the weaknesses, if there are any, of this school district. Could be things like your recent SAC study, facility surveys, technology surveys, documents that you've done, worked through. And so you pretty well know what the strengths are that you want to build on, and maybe some areas that you would like to improve on. And you want to bring someone in who will help you do just that, along with your leadership. So if you will flip on over quickly, and I want to take whatever time you want me to take to make this very brief presentation, and I want to give you time for Q and A. So we'll very quickly look at those 17 steps, which begin on page 12. One of the first things that we ask the board to do is to establish the criteria that you want the candidates to attempt to meet for the superintendency. What are those qualifications that you want the next superintendent to exhibit? We've taken a look at the previous qualifications that you have listed. And if I may, this is a copy of the search brochure that you used during your last search. Did a good job with that. But if you flip on over to about the third page, you'll see that this statement, "We believe leadership makes visions a reality." You see the qualifications that you had utilized when you filled the position at the last time there was a vacancy. So you have some options here. This is one of the first times that the Board of Education will be called upon to make a decision, and that is to adopt the qualifications that you want to utilize. And these qualifications will be printed in a brochure. We've already begun working with your staff on getting some materials together. That brochure will include not only the qualifications, but it'll also include the public relations information that you want to get out to prospective candidates about your school district and about your community. And if you flip through this particular brochure, you'll see all that was there the last time you went through this process. And we'll ask you to work with us to establish a timeline so that we can go through these steps in an appropriate manner and not drag the process out inappropriately. You have a couple of options as you develop the, as we go through the process. One, after you develop the qualifications. And two, after the board approves those qualifications and the material that will be in the advertising document. You can do a hard copy print, similar to what you did last time, and we would assist your staff in getting that done with the mailing and getting out to a list of over 1,500 folks that we have in our mailing list. We've asked us to notify them when there are superintendent searches in which we're involved. That document, as I said, can be a hard copy brochure. Some systems have elected not to do the printing of the hard copy brochure. You folks set high standards when it comes to the utilization of technology. And so some systems are not going to the expense of the brochure and the mailing, the printing, and so forth, and it is distributed electronically. And we would certainly honor that request if you decide to do that. Once again, we distribute the electronic notification of the vacancy to about 1,500 folks, some of which are on the same list, some prefer to use, not to use technology, of course, but to get the printed brochure. There's a price break, obviously. If we're not printing the brochure, if we're not mailing the brochure, if we don't have to use the mailhouse for distribution and so forth, and as we get a little further along in the process, I'll share what those costs might be. But suffice it to say that if you decide to utilize the printed document and the mailed document, that we would only pass along the actual cost of that to you. Let me say upfront, this is not a profit maker for the Georgia School Board Association. We actually lose money on every search that we do because we realize this is a service, an important service that we can provide to you. And so when we talk money in a little bit, we'll talk about just the basic cost of covering some of our staff time as we relate to this. But if you do decide to do a printed brochure, then you'd only have to pick up the cost related to that. Then we step in. Once the timeframe has been established, once the advertisement process has been determined, and in the advertisement process, you may want to do some national advertising. And once again, we will assist you with that based upon the either electronic or hard copy publications that you want to advertise in. And we would help your public relations folks, your communication staff here, to get those into the hands of the appropriate publications that you want. Once again, you would actually reimburse us for the actual cost of those advertisements. We don't add 10% or anything like that. We're not like a general contractor. Then we step in. And over the period of time that the applications are out there, we would ask applicants not to contact individual board members with the questions that they have. And as you might imagine, there are hundreds of questions. Did you really mean that you wanted someone with experience? Did you really mean that we'd have to live in the county if we were to take this job? And so we would be the contact on your behalf for all those dozens of questions that would come in over the period of time that the applications are being received. We then would receive those applications. We go through every one, and we try to assist the applicants to make sure that their applications are complete. We want to make sure that not only do the applicants put their best foot forward, but that you see the applicants with them at their best. And so sometimes they'll forget to put in a resume, sometimes they'll forget to put in some experience or whatever. So on your behalf, we would check the applications and make sure that they're complete and be in contact with the candidates. If you follow me as we flip the pages, once the deadline for applications has been met, we will bring in an external team of folks who have had experience in the employment process, dealing with the employment of chief executive officers and others in the school business. We bring in people who are former superintendents, people who are former HR directors, college and university professors who've prepared superintendents. And we would take the qualifications that the board has set, and we'd ask this review team, this external review team, to measure each application against the qualifications that you've determined. And then at the appropriate time, once that's done, we'll meet with you and bring each application to you. Now, the fact that we have reviewed the applications does not mean that we're recommending any of the candidates to you. As I said, this is an open search process. We're not a headhunter group. If we were, we'd have been after Dr. Evans a long time ago and all the searches that we had helped conduct. But we would bring the applications to you and basically put them in three stacks. We'd say that this group, in group one, according to our panel, more closely meets the qualifications that the board has adopted. Panel, or group two, on the recommendation of our panel, or the assessment of our panel, meet some, but not all, of the qualifications that you have set. And then there'd be the third group that meet few of the qualifications that you'd set. But you get all the applications, they're yours. Before bringing those to you, we would also have checked the references on the top group of applicants. And we, yeah, we checked the references on their application, but we'd go beyond that. We know that anybody who puts down a reference on an application, it's not going to give them a positive recommendation, they need to rethink their relationship with that individual. So we'll review the applications for the references, and then we'll go beyond that. And we'll do Google searches and other electronic searches and bring you then the information on that top group that we find most closely meets your qualifications and also have been checked out with, checked their references. From that, and again, the board can go into group two and into group three, you'll get a copy of all those applications. From that, the board would be encouraged to make the next big decision, and that's to determine whom you'd like to interview. And we have a fairly direct training program for the board if you were to decide to allow us to do that. Takes about an hour, and it, we go over the kinds of things that we would recommend that you ask, and more importantly, the things that the legal legals tell us that you should not ask. Now, I know that you have, you have legal counsel that's available to you, and they could do that for you, but if you want us to do that, we certainly would do that. We also have sample questions that you might want to review as you go into the interview process. Once you determine whom you want to interview, it'd be our responsibility to set those interviews up at a time and at a location that you wish. We will invite the interviewees in to the location. We would have a representative at the location to sort of be the host so that you don't have to be worried about people roaming around and getting lost and the like. And we would take care of the, as I said, being the host for those interviews. And you can interview as many people as you want, but hopefully you would have selected from that, those applications from the applicant pool, not a large number, but those who most closely meet your qualifications. So it'd be our responsibility to schedule those interviews, to assist you in that respect. Then you have some options. From there, you can bring more candidates in, if you like, from the applicant pool. You can bring back some of the applicants that you've interviewed for second interviews. But the main thing we're moving toward then is for you to get closer and closer to the decision that you're going to make about which of the candidates that you would be offering the contract to. As we get to that part of the process, we would encourage you to be working with your school board attorney, to be developing the contractual arrangements that you would be interested in offering the candidates. And that would include the salary and benefits and other things that you want to be putting into the contract. Once you decide that you have some candidates that you're serious about, some that we would consider finalists, those who most closely meet the qualifications that you've set, Georgia law requires you to release the names and information on up to as many as three of those individuals that you are strongly considering for the job. We use Harvard and Hartley, Hawkins, as our attorney with the School Boards Association. They hold our hand through this process. And their interpretation of the law is that as many as three candidates that you're going to release information on means one, two, or three. There are some others around, particularly those who are involved with the media, that think you should release three names. But this board, along with your legal counsel, will decide that. So at an appropriate time, when you've narrowed the field down to one, two, or three, you release those names. And then, as all of you know, you have to wait 14 days for the community, the media, to check them out on your behalf. And after that 14-day period, then the board can legally offer the contract and can, as a board, make the decision on the next superintendent. Then we'll step in one more time. Not the most fun part of the job, but we'll notify those candidates that didn't get selected. Again, on your behalf, express our appreciation and the like, and let them know that you have selected another individual to fulfill the, to fill the job. If you look on page 15, you see a sort of a sample timeframe. As I said, the clock has already started ticking. We've been working with your staff to pull together the advertisement document, whether it's a brochure or whether it's an online document. And once this board decides on the qualifications, then that particular advertisement document, depending on either direction that you want to go in, whether you want to go with the electronic alone, or if you want to go with the hard copy and the electronic advertisement, we can move that right along. We suggest that once you, once we distribute the advertisement of the vacancy, that you wait at least four weeks to give time for the word to get out and for people to respond to the application. By the way, that application will be unique to your school district. We'll actually take the qualifications that you set, and we'll fine-tune the application so that individuals who are applying for the job will be asked to respond to the specific qualifications that you have set. We used to use a generic application, and for the last year or so, we've gone away from that because this board needs to know, what are the qualifications that Jim Puckett has that he thinks fit to the requirements that you have set? And so you'll get the opportunity to see how they respond to the application that's been fine-tuned for this Board of Education. The board really sets the tone for that timeframe. We certainly don't want to rush. We certainly want to make sure that the appropriate time is given to the superintendent selection process. Sometimes boards have a little bit of a difficulty agreeing on the qualifications. And so we obviously can't do any advertising until the qualifications are set. Then sometimes boards, after the applications are in, have a little bit of a difficult time determining which of the candidates they want to interview. And so that would prolong the search process a little bit. So really, the board, as it makes its decisions periodically through the search process, will help us as we move through the calendar of the search. So Madam Chair, that's a fairly brief explanation. If I may, again, with your permission, just to let you know that what we're talking about here as far as the expenses that this board would incur. The 17-step process that I've outlined for you would be covered by the $6,500 fee. If the board decides to do a printed brochure, that would be mailed to the distribution list, then that would be in addition to that. Just to give you a ballpark, we recently did this brochure for the Bibb County Board of Education, and I don't think that's exactly what you folks are developing, but just to give you an idea, it's about $1,600 to do that brochure and get it out on the street. And that includes the printing, that includes the mailhouse distribution to our mail list. Of course, you'll get, the system will get copies if you want to distribute them internally or whatever. And that includes the postage, which, as you know, keeps rising. So we're talking about somewhere in the neighborhood of $1,600 for that. We would ask you to help us offset our expenses in meeting with the board at the standard rates. There probably won't be any charges there. If you will allow me to be your search coordinator, I live just across the lake, and so there probably wouldn't be any additional charges. There's no charge for today, for example, or for tonight. We just look at that as part of the service. And if you decide that you want to do national advertising, the actual cost of that advertising would be yours to incur. So, Madam Chair, that's, again, a very brief presentation, but certainly I'm open to questions.
Okay, we want to, I guess we need to just start looking at the 17 steps and discuss what we want to discuss with them. What's up?
That's fine. I have a question, but we can wait.
Well, which one is your question about?
Well.
The timeline, well, I mean, if we go through them, we've already really, we have a timeline, kind of, right?
Right.
So we've got that done. The developing mail announcements, are y'all thinking?
I just wanted to, Jim, I can't remember. Give me an example of some people that would be on the national who we'd advertise with, or how do you get that out there? And the other people, the 1,500 people that have just expressed interest?
That's correct. Now, in addition to that, in addition to those who've expressed a desire to be on our mailing list, we share that with the National School Boards Association. They have a job line posting. We have an agreement with several other school board associations in which they will post our vacancies. The organization which Candace is involved with, the Georgia Human Relations Association, allows us to use their mailing list to get it out. It'll go to every school board member, it'll go to every superintendent. But to go formally, nationally, you might want to consider a couple of these. I think last time you did the American Association of School Administrators Online and Education Week in talking to your staff. I believe those are the two national publications that you dealt with. One of the things that we would need to work on, as you can see over on the right-hand column, some of those national publications have deadlines that are pretty far out for when they're actually published. And so we'd want to make sure that we didn't choose a document or publication that would delay the search while we're waiting for their hard copy publications to get out. But again, we'll work with your staff on that if you decide to do the national advertising.
Do you ever, like, we were members of the Celebkey Center or something, would that be those organizations, leadership organizations? Is that an area that, I don't know if that's?
I'm not familiar with them doing search announcements. Maybe you would be a selective, but I've not seen one.
Yeah, well, we have a great relationship with Phil and George. Yeah, well, we have a great relationship with Phil and George, but...
The only reason I brought that up, Jim, is because we were such, we are part of that for 10 years and...
I understand, and we certainly would make them aware. I don't know that they have been involved in the search business in a traditional sense, but on occasion, we will contact individuals and say, "We're doing a search for..."
Right, that's...
And as you bring in administrators who might be interested, again, we're not a headhunter firm, but if there are folks out there that people like Dr. Slecky or Dr. Thompson know, we certainly encourage them to let us know so we can make sure they're aware.
Yeah, I guess that's what I was looking for, knowing that if anybody was involved in that, that that philosophy is a lot of what inspired us, so...
Sure, I understand completely, and we would certainly do that on your behalf.
Okay.
So do we want to discuss what ads we might be interested in? Education Week, if you think? That's the one you did last time?
Yeah. I think, yeah, definitely.
The top school jobs with no tax limit for 30 days, is that, I mean, what do you recommend? Or do you...
Really, we don't do a lot of national advertising anymore because of the internet. Word tends to get out, and even when we have school districts who say, "Well, we don't want to do a national search, we just want to do the southeast," we get applications from regions outside the southeast because it is, as I said, on some of the national websites and the like. But it's really your call.
Do you read Education Week?
I do, but I don't read the advertisements.
But if you were looking for a job, you might know, right?
I hadn't been looking for a job.
Yeah.
I have occasionally looked through, to be honest, I have, just to see kind of who's hiring and who advertises there, yeah.
But would it, is it better? I mean, if Jim is saying that we have more, just as much, not, you know, doing it through the internet, do we need to do that? I don't know.
What about LinkedIn?
Once again, we haven't had experience with...
I mean, I'm starting to see a lot of social media, not only LinkedIn, but just email sharing and Facebook sharing and tweeting, and, you know, we're very much enabled in working that. So once the network starts, it just exponentially grows as you get the word out. And if you have it on a site, at least where you have a landing page and the information, the qualifications, you can always take that too and link it on a postcard so you cut your printing cost. If you want to get the word out through snail mail, you can still send a postcard, which is cheap, and be able to get that to the mailing list that they maintain, if we want to at least prompt them through that. I think we want a technology-enabled candidate.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Do we really want to spend any money on printing? Because we certainly don't want a person that doesn't want to get an application online. I mean...
And are they already operating in that premise of technology and would trip across this connection in the process, along as we use those avenues to communicate it?
I would rather see us spending our printing money on some of...
Like LinkedIn, I would be a favorite LinkedIn, for sure.
Advertising this way. And like, do we have our own set of, like, through Bring Your Own Technology? Do we have our own database of people that we've, that have reached out to us to see us, that we can turn around and reach back out to them? I don't know the answer, you know, to that.
And obviously, the...
You know, I would hope so.
It would be posted on your website. We also work with your staff to make sure that you meet the letter of the law as far as Teach Georgia is concerned.
Yeah.
You have to post all of your vacancies with Teach Georgia, and we would work to make sure that that's done. The superintendent announcement's a little bit different than, say, a principal announcement because we want to make sure that anybody who's interested would contact us and not contact the local board. But we'll work through that.
I guess back to our own timeline, how soon do we have to decide on these online...
Let me ask one more question. Does everybody do a print brochure, or is it kind of normal, not to anymore?
Over the last year, generally speaking, the smaller school systems have opted not to do the printed brochure. Some of the larger ones are still using the printed brochure. I guess your next question is, can I tell the difference in the number of applications that we get? And again, it's not substantially different. I can't guarantee you how many applications you get. I like to tell boards when I make a formal presentation, you only need one.
The right one.
If it's the right one.
The right one.
But I can't tell any major difference in the number of applications that we get because, to a great extent, and I can't tell you how many, there's overlap between the two lists that we utilize. But it's really, it's really your call.
So what are we thinking? Education Week and LinkedIn?
I think we just do electronically.
Well, that would be, those are electronic.
Okay, excuse me.
Yeah, right? I mean, that's what I, yeah, not the print, but I'm thinking just the online top school jobs.
Okay, sure.
Do this, yeah, and I think we can use some of our internal services to get it out in social media and get it connected out there.
Exactly. And then his email list is...
Right, that's automatic.
And that is extensive, so...
And again, the postings on the websites that I alluded to.
It'd be really cool if we had some interviews from people instead of, like, we have to interview the comments on the brochure, that we just have people speaking.
Some videos.
Well, we could do that on our webpage, where they could go to our webpage.
I already think we have some that we did not too long ago for just school system, you know, what is a school system? Because I know as we started looking at people, we started looking at recordings online, and if you just link to some of our current resources, we just have to gather those together and make them available on that site. I think that'd be sufficient.
So for these ads in Education Week and LinkedIn, we need to let Jennifer, I guess, work with your people to establish the links that we need to come back to our website for our brochure and that kind of thing?
Certainly. And the posting, as far as GSBA concerned, basically has three links. It has the link to the document, it has the link to the application, and then has a link to your school district website.
Okay.
So it would bring it back to that automatic, or we could put any kind of links on there that you wanted to, if you wanted to go specifically to another site. But yes, we work with your staff on that.
Okay, so are we all comfortable with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So we're not talking about a printed brochure, is that correct?
Right, that's correct.
Go printing it.
Now, again, anything that goes out of here comes to you first. I hope you understood, I'm not sure that I said that. We're not going to just come up with something and send it out. The board will be asked to review whatever documents that are prepared as far as the advertisements are concerned, and you get that opportunity before they are actually distributed.
Okay, and I guess the first one, do you establish the criteria? Do we want to discuss that right now also?
Well, I think some of that comes from our listening sessions, that's what we're seeking to understand right now.
But I mean, so they start working, I feel like that the criteria that was on the brochure before will be a good basis for us to start, don't you?
It's a good start.
Updated with our...
Yes, with the...
Current beliefs. Their current beliefs.
Right.
Yeah, you also have done a community survey electronically, I understand. So you have that information. If you would like, we have a survey that we can utilize for board members, in which we give you an opportunity to respond electronically to the qualifications that you individually are favoring, and then we would compile those and bring you that list if you were to decide you wanted to do that.
I think it works doing it.
I think so.
Probably get that to you tomorrow.
Okay, that'd be kind of interesting.
And once again, we can, the faster that you respond, the faster we can get the results back to you. But we'll try to get that out to you tomorrow.
I'm looking, there's one thing I wanted to talk about a little bit on our vision and beliefs, and I can't find where it says it now. Did we have that we wanted them to live in the, to become a resident of the county?
That was what before, but not...
I mean, that'll be one thing we want to take out, right?
Well, why?
Well, if somebody lives in Milton...
To the area.
In the area, right. I mean, they would have to move there. But I mean, I feel like if somebody were to live right across the line, it's just that the county's grown so much and the surrounding areas has grown. If there was somebody great in Milton or Alpharetta, I mean, would we want to make that mandatory that they sell their house and move 10 minutes over the line? You see what I'm saying?
Do, but at the same time, I think to hold this job, and Dr. Evans even mentioned it one time to us, that you get so involved in the community and the things you're doing, and it's hard to be separate from where you live in many cases.
Well, but if you just live, if you live a mile over the line, you still would be involved in the community.
That's why I like to say county area.
I just don't know that it should be, it should say area maybe rather than inside the county.
Because so many of our staff are not within our county as well.
Yeah.
So they could relate. It'd be nice if they...
I don't want to exclude anybody because they might live right outside the county, and they say, "Well, if that's a mandatory thing..."
Oh, yeah.
You see what I'm saying?
What if they have children that are centers in school or whatever?
You can lean it out and consider it.
And that's often part of the discussion process when you get down to the contractual arrangements.
Kind of keep an open mind.
Generally speaking, candidates understand there's an expectation that you're involved in the community. And again, maybe not so general that you live in the community, but sometimes boards will put that in as a requirement. The one thing that I would caution you, and I come back to the qualifications that you listed last time, please don't, in developing a qualification, don't make it so narrow that you exclude great candidates. For example, it's not unusual when we do the survey of the board, one of the questions we'll ask you is, "Do you want your next superintendent to have a doctor? Do you want your next superintendent to have had superintendent experience?" Well, if that is a requirement, you're going to narrow your pool dramatically. Particularly this day and time, there are a significant number of great superintendents who've never been a principal, for example, but they came up through the instructional side, or they came up through the HR side, or they came up through the finance side. Now, you can say, "We prefer that," and that doesn't limit you if you want to prefer that someone have a particular characteristic. But if you make it a requirement, then you're narrowing your pool. I use this example because he's our friend, but if you require someone to have a doctorate and to have had superintendent experience, then Albert Wilbanks would never be superintendent in Gwinnett County. So if you have strong feelings that you want someone to meet some of these requirements, don't make it a requirement. Then when you get down to weighing the qualifications of the candidate, you've got two candidates that are highly qualified, and one of them has met, say, they're a superintendent or they have a doctorate and the other one has not, then you can help weigh that in the final decision process. But that way, you haven't eliminated those good candidates from the very beginning.
I feel like this, you did a good job with this before. I mean, possession of a doctorate degree is important, though not mandatory. So that doesn't limit, there are several things with the basis of what we're going to start with. When you read through this, I think that doesn't limit, which is, I agree 100%, we don't need to limit it so much that we don't get some, that's what I'm saying about, you have to live in the county.
Right, and that's what prompted me to bring up the other point too, that you want, you certainly want to let people know what your standards are, but you want to give them some options of meeting their standards.
Okay, so anything else as we look through here that we do want them to do, not want them to do, or have questions or concerns?
Well, I think we need to wait for some more input from the community like we're gathering before we finalize this, because that's why we're doing it.
Oh, I mean, I'm going through this.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you meant this list.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm back to the 17 steps now.
Okay, what step are we on?
Well, I mean, we kind of did the announcements and all of that. They will respond to all the nominations, we're all good with that.
Just a one question, does the questions go directly to you if you're the one running this for us, or do they, are they answered by many people in GSBI? Just curious how that process works.
Basically, it will be either me or Pam Harrison, whom you know. She's my administrative assistant and has been doing this longer than I have. And the ones that she answers are those that I'm comfortable with her answering, others will go to me. But they most often are procedural kinds of things. We'll get, first of all, let me remind you that you're going to get almost all the applications the last four days of the timeframe.
Oh, great.
We'll send you a report periodically. It won't have the names of the applicants, but it will be a profile, that you've got X number of applications, so many of them have doctorates, so many of them are currently superintendents or former superintendents. And you'll be disappointed in the first couple of weeks.
So don't panic, are you saying, don't panic?
That's right, because we in education tend to be procrastinators, and we'll get the majority of the applications in the last five or six days. But most of the questions we'll get are, "I put my application in the mail yesterday, the deadline for applications was tomorrow, did you get it?" That sort of thing. So it's primarily procedural rather than substantive.
If we receive emails, we will just forward them on to you?
I would ask that you forward it, obviously, if you feel comfortable answering, but the last thing we want to happen is for the board to have to get into the Q and A business.
We want to not answer differently, too. I think we would be better to send it.
And the other thing, too, is that you want to make sure, when you get to the end of the process, that you can say to your school district staff and your community that you kept an open mind throughout the whole process. You don't want to put yourself in a position where candidates start lobbying you as individuals.
Right.
And so that's why we like to have you just direct the questions to us. And the other thing is that we'd like for you to appoint one member of the board to be our contact, so that the information flow to the board and then back to us is appropriate as possible, I guess. That way, whoever the contact person is will send you the information, then that can be distributed to the board, and that works really well, rather than me trying to be concerned, "Well, did I get the information to Ms. Morrissey? I know I got it to Mr. Cleveland," but that way, the burden's on whoever the contact person is. And sometimes that's the chair, and sometimes it's not, it depends on who the board wants to choose.
Well, I mean, I can do that. I've tried to send y'all everything, I think I have so far. So that will be fine. Okay, if we go on now on the page 13, as you glance over these, are there any other questions that you have or things that you want to do differently?
And the contract that we send you, and we'll send it to you, Ms. Light, electronically, it'll have a statement in there that there can be amendments, that if the board wants other services, that we certainly can deal with that.
Okay. What about the Prepare Board for Interviews? Or, I know that some of y'all have done this, but I have not, and I would, I wouldn't mind doing that.
Especially with the questions that you're not supposed to ask.
Yeah.
It's really not being in HR, no, Tom helped us a lot because he's in HR last time, but I would love to have it, too.
Okay.
All of us to hear the same thing.
Yes, exactly, I would, too.
And we would schedule that at your convenience. Sometimes we schedule that immediately before the first session of interviews.
Right, exactly, yeah.
We would send you some proposed questions prior to that. One thing that we encourage the board to do when you get ready to do the interviews is allow board members who have a particular interest to ask the questions in that area of interest. So if you're interested in curriculum, let's let that person ask the curriculum questions. Let's let the person who's interested in budget and finance ask those, and that way you can make your interview process as expedient as possible. That doesn't mean you don't do follow-ups and that sort of thing. And the other thing, too, by doing it that way, you also tend to ask the same questions to the individuals who are interviewing, and that gives you a good perspective on where they are.
Okay, and as far as scheduling the interviews and all that, I think we will just have to wait and see how many, we don't want to say we're only going to interview so-and-so, we need to just see what we get, right?
I would encourage you to wait until we get further along in the process, yes.
Like last time, we did it at the Waverly. They were coming from out of town, and it was in one place, and it was out of this county, you know, away.
And thank you for bringing it up. I would suggest that you not hold the interviews in this facility for a variety of re... I would suggest that you not hold the interviews in this facility for a variety of reasons. First of all, when we bring you the applications, we'll ask you to, uh, go into executive session for that, and we can do that legally, the, uh, open records law allows that to happen. Secondly, the interviews need to be in executive session, uh, because you're dealing with people's lives, you're dealing with people who have other jobs, and they may not be yet ready to say to their communities, "I'm ready to leave." And you will honor that confidentiality up until at whatever point you will, uh, decide whether or not you're serious about a candidate. But if you hold the interviews onsite, then word is going to get out, and then your community and your staff starts to choose upsides. Well, I saw Jim going in for an interview, boy, he would be a lousy superintendent. So, let me start calling my board member and start calling my, my PTA contacts and say, "We don't want Jim to be our superintendent." And by holding it offsite, uh, that allows, first of all, the confidentiality to the candidates, and then it allows you to, uh, to go through the process, hopefully without, uh, the, uh, the lobbying that sometimes can go on. The other thing I want you to think about is how you'll treat local candidates. You need to decide, not now, but later, uh, if you will interview all the local candidates, or if you will interview just those candidates that the external team, uh, suggests most closely meets your qualifications. This is a personal thing with me, but I have a hard time with courtesy interviews. Because if you are giving me an interview, I want to be able to think that you're really seriously interested in me, and I'm going to give it my best shot. And it would be a terrible feeling for me to find out that you just gave me an interview because you, I work here. And so, that's not a decision you have to make today, but that's something that you would want to consider. And that's legitimate either way, because once again, these candidates are your candidates, the applicants are your applicants, and so, uh, you would, uh, cross that bridge when you get to it as well.
Okay, so, as you look through, does anybody see anything else they have questions about or concerns?
Number fifteen, with the Board of Ed Committee visits a school district candidate, is that done very often?
No, ma'am.
It just seems odd to me, I know we did not do that, but I, I was just, I was curious.
We did virtually, we visited the websites and saw some of the candidates' board meetings to see how they operated.
Right, we checked them out that way, but I thought...
That was interesting.
I was just wondering if anybody...
Internally, we're always reviewing our processes, and that's one that we're strongly considering taking out, because, um, it's been a long time since I know of anybody that, uh, had, uh, went out to the, to the communities, and when that has happened, it often was without sanction of the board.
Okay, yeah.
An individual board member decided that he or she would go out and visit the community, and then, you know, who do you interview?
Right, yeah.
Do you talk to the police chief and the jailer and the bartender?
Right, right.
Or do you interview the board chair and the, uh, the ministers and, and that sort of thing? If you decide you want to do that, we certainly could assist you, but as, uh, Mr. Cleveland has pointed out, in this day and age of electronic media, there's not a lot going on out there that you won't know about.
And I guess we don't have to include like a peanut boil or a barbecue once we announce the two to see how good they are.
Well, I don't know, we're not.
We're not, we're outside that one.
It's been important around here lately.
Yeah, let's not, um...
Leave it optional for now, okay.
We've got an option.
All right.
And again, if I may comment.
That's right.
Again, sharing experiences that we've had, we, sometimes boards will want to take the, if they announce three candidates or two candidates, then they want to take them out, uh, into the community. It's fine if you want to do that, but you're, again, running the risk of the community taking sides.
And then they won't like if you don't pick theirs, and they're not going to like you no matter what.
And, and I want to commend you, you've already begun a great process of getting community input. That's where the community input needs to be at the beginning of the process. Like it or not, the law requires you to make the decision of employing staff, including the superintendent. And, uh, you certainly can get all the feedback that you want, but when you get down to the last parts of the process and, uh, you find that, uh, you have more than one candidate and you do a roadshow, I call it, uh, that often creates issues that you might not have considered.
I don't think we're interested in a roadshow, are we?
No.
Okay, I'm looking at the timeline.
That's what I was...
I'm looking at it right now, um, we have already started our meetings, our input meetings. I know I've been to a couple, and I think...
And so now we're in the cabinet, yeah.
We have one tonight that I think you're going to facilitate for us, and, um, we have on our timeline to advertise and begin to accept applications on March seventeenth.
That's what I thought, which is Monday, but we're not going to have our brochure ready. That was my question before, is, or what do we...
And, and the thinking was, if, if we use the brochure we have as we interview people, we can incorporate what we learn from the input and from the community as we, as we interview and go through the process, but that way we're not waiting too long. But, I mean, you know, we could, what, what...
But you're saying the brochure will be ready by Monday?
Well, if we pretty much go with what we have here and then incorporate the input that we learn, I mean, this, this is very, to me, this brochure's really good because it's very broad and, and you, you covered everything. But we can wait, I mean, that's what I'm asking.
I'm saying we have to be able to review it, you know, even, I know, like I say, it's going to be different, obviously. I mean, are we going to have enough time to have it done and us review it by Monday? Is my question.
Perhaps you might consider a combination of, of the two. Generally speaking, boards will adopt the qualifications as determined by the board, and then the staff and community feedback process follows. And you incorporate that as you go through the, uh, process of interviewing and selection of the final candidates and that sort of thing, not necessarily the initial qualifications, uh, but we, we do it both ways. Sometimes the board will wait until they've had several opportunities for community feedback and the like. Sometimes the board will go ahead and establish the initial qualifications, and then we'll,
So, if we, if we were to go March seventeenth, we would use the initial qualifications that we've already established, which are what we have? Or we can wait until later?
And I'll be candid with you, I don't think we could get the March seventeenth deadline.
Okay, so we need to, we need to modify this timeline.
We could say as soon as possible. What we can do is we'll, we can send you a modified calendar once we get with your staff. If the board decides you want to go with the current qualifications for the advertisement, then we'll get with your staff and determine how quickly we can get the brochure together and get it to your approval. And that would determine then, if you want to go four weeks or six weeks out, what the application deadline would be.
No, kind of.
So, it'd be prompted by how quickly the, uh, advertisement document is, is completed.
Why don't we use this week to go through it and then discuss it next week? Can we do that?
I mean, I would assume Jennifer, like I say, has been working on some of it already, but I mean, obviously, we don't want the same exact, like header, heading on there.
She has, she has been working on it.
So, she can send us what she's got as soon as she can, so we can do reviews, like you're saying, and then...
And, and let me say, this is a lighthouse school system, uh, it's something for which y'all have worked extremely hard and, and have seen great results. I don't think you need to be in a rush to try to beat some other school district that's also in the process of doing a superintendent search. You're going to get, uh, uh, be shocked if you didn't get, uh, a significant number of quality applicants regardless of when you set that deadline for application. So, uh, I don't think you need to be in a hurry as far as that part of the searches. I think you, uh, have some time to, to develop the advertisement document and to meet your needs of review and adoption. And as I said, at that point, depending upon the board's wishes, if you want to set a four-week deadline, a five-week deadline, a six-week deadline for the applications, uh, then, uh, we certainly can do that. When we let the adoption, or we let the development schedule of the advertisement determine what the day for, uh, getting it out and getting the applications back.
I think we were concerned about, um, the timing of the search, what we're doing right now, that it's not the optimum time to get maybe people that have already, some really good people who have already made commitments other place, I'm not saying this right, but you know what I mean?
Well, generally speaking, uh, local boards are getting superintendents sign the contracts, uh, at the, in, in January, sometimes in December.
Okay.
Sometimes in February. You'll attract some sitting superintendents, some who may have already signed contracts.
Okay.
Uh, but then, uh, if you decide that those are folks that you're interested in, they would be responsible for negotiating that contract.
Gotcha.
I don't think that you're going to, uh, uh, going to lose any quality candidates that, uh, might be waiting to see what the deadline is here.
Okay.
Okay, so what we want to do is get what we have, get Jennifer to send it to us, put, review the application on our meeting next week, March twentieth, and then from that point, we will establish when we'll be ready to put the application out there, right? Am I hearing everybody? I mean, I'm just, I want to make sure that I'm, we're all on the same page.
And if we could get Jim to send us a survey for the board, so we can add that to the conversation as well.
Right.
All right.
Qualifications.
Okay.
So, I said, I'll, we'll try to get that to you tomorrow, certainly by Monday.
And I think, you're, you're right, darling, this is so gentle, I mean, what we, we spoke about, and it probably...
It's a good guideline to start. I mean, there may be some things changed, like the residency and all of that, but this is a really good...
Oh, it's good, yeah.
...guideline.
And, and I think that...
And it's very general.
It is very general, and when we get the feedback from the community, I think that they're, they're probably going to be more specific about certain things.
And that's the thing we can look for.
The message that, that we're going to use during the interview process versus this was just the application.
Right, we can use the community input, that input during the interview process, is what I was thinking. Okay, so we have a plan?
Right, and instead of using this, we'll use videos or something, if it's going to be online.
It'd be nice to have...
Do we have a formal contract that we'll have to put on the agenda for next week also?
At an appropriate time, uh, we would like for the board to approve the contract.
Let's put that on the agenda next week also.
Obviously, the clock has started to tick.
Yeah, we'll put it on...
We certainly have no problems with that, but...
We'll put it on next week.
We will get, uh, to, uh, your chair, uh, the contractor, we'll send that to you electronically, so that...
Okay.
That'd be great.
If we do some video interviews, it'd be nice to not just do adults, it'd be nice to get some students and put on that as well.
Hmm, like on the student advisory committee or something?
Yeah.
And Madam Chair, will you be my contact? Is that the decision?
I will.
Obviously, I will not refuse to return any of your phone calls or your, your emails, uh, but if it, uh, is, if it's convenient, if it's not a burning question, one thing I want to make sure is that every board member's getting the same information, and we can do that best if we flow through, uh, our contact person.
Darling, it's going to be our point guard.
Hey, it's a fun job, darling.
So, um, the March seventeenth, we're, we're going to change that to soon. But the end of March, we'll have our application out and ready, I think, we can safely say that.
I've looked along at the timeline again. That was my question all along, is how could we get that done by the seventeenth?
And then, um, meetings with the superintendent advisory meetings, cabinet principals, that's ongoing.
And that will be all done by the end of May.
Yes, we, we are working, or the first of April, there may be one or two at the very beginning of April.
Several of them the twenty-first, and then the last on the twenty-eighth, I think.
And then we're still good with May fifteenth, approved interim superintendent, and then June thirtieth, Dr. Evans retires, and then sometime in the fall, we're going to just, we'll sift through and, we're, we're still good with the rest of the timeline that we've kind of established.
Is the timeline for the deadline for applications on that? We have to have that for the brochure, so we have to think about that too.
No, it is not.
Okay, because that has to go on the brochure.
So, that is something else that we'll need to talk about next week.
Next week.
And as I said, once we see how far along we are...
You're saying four to six weeks?
On the development of the document, uh, then...
So, you think four to six weeks is...
Yeah, I would go beyond six weeks. I wouldn't go fewer than four weeks.
Okay.
That still puts us the middle of May, if we, if it's out by the end of March. The middle of May is six weeks, right?
Yeah.
Uh, one question for you, um, obviously Savannah, uh, GSBA comes up. How it involved in the, how, does that interfere? The timeline and you and the process and all that, is that a problem?
No, we'll work with you on that.
Okay, okay.
Obviously, I wouldn't be able to meet with you physically, uh, on the dates of the conference, but...
Right, exactly. I'm just wondering what...
With your assistance, we'll schedule around that. And there's one other thing I want to mention, uh, I'm moving out of this role with GSBA, and Trudy Sauer, whom you know, on our staff is moving into this role, but that's going to be a gradual process, and so what I'd like your permission, uh, is to allow her to shadow me as I go through this search process. Unless you want somebody else on the staff, uh, I'd be delighted to be your search contact, but, uh, with your permission, I'd like for this to be a learning experience for her as she, uh, transitions into this, uh, this role.
Sounds like a win-win, we'll get two for one.
That's right. But to answer the question, we will send you a contract that will outline, hopefully, uh, these, uh, rates that we had talked about, uh, as we, uh, confirm those, and, uh, and it will have a clause in there that we can amend the contract if you want other services as we, as we progress.
And I don't remember Nancy and Ann or, or Dr. Norton, did we do background checks ourselves, or did we let GSBA do this last time?
GSBA did it, I think.
Yeah, you did every, yeah. Again, I don't know, I don't know how many candidates, I don't remember the details of that.
And as you saw on the sheet, we would charge you our actual cost for that.
Okay.
Right.
And right now, it's about fifty-five dollars a pop.
Sure you did, I'm sure it was just the top.
It was the top, sorry.
Dr. Sauer, if you may, want to clarify the requirements by law for employees, in fully terms of background check, and how that relates to the role of superintendent.
Tell me, tell me. No, no, basically, we're doing the criminal background check, uh, through the GBI and the, the, uh, credit check, we have a service that provides that. But once they're employed, then they'd have to go through your process.
Right.
Of being fingerprinted and so forth.
I think you're talking about pre-offer in GSBA.
Yes, 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 that's correct. We're talking about pre-offer.
Okay.
Okay.
The only other thing with that is there, there's usually a component in this type, at least with, um, degree validation?
Uh, we basically have not been doing degree validations. What we often do though is to make that a part of the, uh, process when we do res, uh, check their resumes.
Resumes, okay.
And do their references.
Okay.
Uh, we, uh, often, uh, are able to do that, do that process.
In that period, okay.
But you will get a copy of their transcripts.
Okay.
So, you can see for yourself what, what they say.
Okay.
And, uh, so we haven't, thank goodness, run into an issue with that. That happens sometimes, as we will know.
It does happen, okay.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, do we have a plan we're all comfortable with? Okay, thank you very much, and we'll be in touch, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Do we have, uh, future agenda items besides the, what I have, the GSBA contract and the review the application March twentieth? We need to put that on there.
Discussion about, um, whether what we're going to do this in June, if we're going to go GSBA or the, the nation, the southeast... Because that's going to play into this whole process that we're talking about, so we've got to figure out what we're going to do.
Okay. Okay, I got that, anything else? We're good? Okay, we will now move on to an action item, which is the adoption of the revised 2013-14 employees calendar with Dr. Norton.
Thank you. As you received on your board packet, you are aware of the days we missed from school, and we've already discussed with the board how we're going to modify and how we've, uh, looked at our student calendar. Uh, we detailed that we've changed our employee calendars, and they were attached, and basically we're adding two days to several of our calendars, allowing people to make up time or take leave. And so, um, those things are detailed on your calendar, so I'd like to recommend to So, I'd like to recommend to the superintendent that he recommended you that we adopt the personnel calendars as revised and explained in the attached board items.
It is recommended that the Forsyth County Board of Education approve the adoption of revised 2013-14 employee calendars as presented.
Do I have a motion to approve the recommendation?
Second.
A motion by Ann and a second by Nancy, any discussion?
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor, unanimous? Okay, and next we have executive session with personnel. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
Motion by Tom and a second by Kristen, all in favor? Unanimous.